Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach on Tuesday, June 19, 2018 at 7:00 p.m. For the local, Councilor Vandell.
President.
Councilor Vandell.
Yes.
Councilor Moore.
Present.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
President Robert E. Jackson. To record the case presence of Corporation Councilman Robert E. Sisi will now have a sedentary play.
Actually tomorrow is our Commissioner of the Etw's birthday, so I'm going to ask him to do his pledge.
Just before we begin tonight's meeting, as you can see, the Police Commissioner and Action City Manager is right here with us. As many of you know, our resources are focused on a search and rescue of a young child who is missing, and I just want to take a moment that our thoughts and prayers should stay with his family, as well as the first responders, our lifeguards, firefighters, and police personnel. We'll save the city manager's update until potentially a Sunday or maybe noon.
First item this evening is for Public hearing of the Boys and Men of the Code of Vortices of the City of Long Beach, Long Beach, Long Beach.
I can declare the meeting open. The City Manager is here to give you details of that. Item number one, sanitation charges for the collection of garbage imposed on residential properties. A, the owner and owners of every parcel is no property in the city in which one or more residential units is or are located shall pay to the city annually. We advance one half on July 1st of each year, beginning July 1st, 2018, and one half on July 1st of each year, beginning on January 1st, 2019. Sanitation charges in the amount of $605 for each residential unit contained in such parcels of property for the collection of garbage, paper, writing, from set premises. Are there any comments from the Council?
Yeah, just to summarize, it's raising the garbage collection fees $20 a year. That's what this is.
Are there any?
Any comments?
Any comments from the public on here? See, go for the hand, how's the beer and head then?
Second item is a public hearing for ordinance of the Code of Vortices of the City of Long Beach, Long Beach, Special Ops.
Okay. Since the acting City Manager is here, I can ask Corporation Council to just give a little summary of the ordinance that's proposed. And just for clarification purposes, this is only on for hearing, we haven't had a vote on the item. The purpose of this hearing is to hear your comments, your proposals, and thoughts on the item, and then we'll deal with it and take those comments down and decide how to proceed with the item.
So, to summarize the item, we obviously have a jewel or resource here in the city, and everybody who comes down here and wants to have events here, probably in the summer of the year all year round, knows it, and avails itself for that through a very generous policy that the city has supported in years past with respect to the issuance of special permits. What this proposed legislation accomplishes is it forces permit suppliers to basically compensate the city for the anticipated cost of the event in advance of the event from now on. In cases where the city overbills, the applicant will get an reimbursement after the event. In cases where the city underbills, the applicant will receive an invoice, and that's more or less than summary.
Any comments from the Council?
Just want to clarify, so this is on tonight solely for the hearing purpose, but we'll be open.
That's correct. Comments from the public?
Thank you. City Mayor Mr. Mc. The name is in the spot. The chairman, the mentor of the area, the president of the state, the president of the East End, I have a business team in Long Beach and West End.
Speak up please.
So, that, okay. And I'm here tonight to speak about these fees that the city wants to impose upon our organization. The organization is a nonprofit organization, and every year from the parade run, which is, as you can see, the 29th or 30th year, the monies that are collected from restaurants come in this net of fees that we pay out for horses and vans and things like that, usually $15,000 to $20,000 of that money is distributed to Long Beach every year towards that event. And the remaining money that's left is somewhere between $5,000 and $10,000. That money is given to charities, donated scholarships, donated to the school. No one in the organization receives any salary, no one receives any benefit whatsoever. The prices that are being mentioned for the costs of producing that event in full would basically be far more than could be afforded. It would probably do the same thing with the Michelle O'Neill Foundation, the Polar Bear Foundation, these are all charitable events. No one takes any money, everything is donated. If they hadn't paid for these events, they probably wouldn't have these events anymore. And I think that's part of culture, a city inherently of all events, to kids who are worried because no one has paid for them, it's really disgraceful to the city, which has led to this culture, so we need to. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? I'm shut.
I don't pass that thing in front of me, so I remember, it's $250, because the permit fee has gone up two, correct?
That is the permit fee, for a special permit.
For a special permit, and it is currently $100, correct?
$120.
It's $120? It went up again?
That's what's in the code, yeah.
Oh, wow, okay, so I remember, I think the first lemonade pedal was only $75, and it went up to $100. So, I really am not okay with this at all. As you all know, I run the only public education event thing for bicycle and pedestrian safety called the Lemonade Pedal, and I do this voluntarily. We do not have money for this. It, like, as it is, that $100 whatever is a lot, but to raise it to $250, I am moving the lemonade pedal outside of Long Beach here because I don't have the authority. I mean, other, the other choice is to start charging people so I can, you know, do kind of their job, like educating people on, because we don't have any kind of education for a bicyclist here. So, I think that this fee is really unfair for nonprofits who aren't, you know, the person who just spoke, they do a great thing, raise money for benefits and stuff, but then there's also smaller nonprofits such as mine, who has, I have no staff, I have no funding, and I'm just trying to provide a service to the city that you don't already, that you aren't providing, so this is extremely unfair. And for a nonprofit to have to pay $250 just to file a piece of paper, that's all this is. This is a piece of paper, this is somebody already getting paid, whether it's $100 or $250. It's not fair that I, that I and other nonprofits are expected to pay the same amount as organizations that are coming here to make money holding events. So, it's really, really unfair that there's no kind of like sliding or any type of sliding gate type of thing. So, I really would like you to just, $250 is crazy. New York City, the permit fees are $25, and you only need 30 days in advance notice to file the paperwork. Towneham said it's $10, and you only need, I believe, it's 30 days as well. Long Beach, $250 in 45 days' notice? You're basically telling small nonprofits and small community organizations, I'm thinking of our civics as well, I'm thinking about maybe a Girl Scout troop wants to hold an event, you're telling them it's going to cost $250 to file a piece of paper? That's not what Long Beach is about. Like, the specialness of the city is that we have great vibrant community events, right? Isn't that why we love it here? And so, this is just kind of, it seems like a revenue type generator, and this isn't where we should be looking for money.
So, Allison, you know, your point is very well taken, as always. I just wanted to try to explain what that fee is based on, the processing fee, that's designed to reflect the cost of the research, the internal research and analysis that goes on in connection with every single one of the events that we have in the city. And I, hang on, hang on a second. So, I mean, I'm just trying to explain what the rationale, that's all. And you're free to disagree with the fee, however, I can tell you, like, the City Park can attest to this, you have no idea how much is devoted to planning these things. Apparently, there's frankly, just like, there's an opportunity cost associated with that, and this is a frankly paltry amount to collect in connection with those, with that expenditure of time and resources that goes into planning these events. And not just, you know, one event, but we saw this especially with Pride last year, and I can't begin to tell you the amount and the time and resources that went into the processing of that permit. So, that's, I just want to, I'm just trying to explain the rationale, but I don't need any compensation on it.
And I appreciate that, and what votes into Pride, and events, whether it's the Michelle O'Neill or the, or other things, those are big massive planning things. You are putting that in the same basket as something, for example, as the Lemonade Pedal, something that I've run over a year, and I do head to toe. There is nothing the city needs to do for it.
I'm not against it.
So, there needs to be.
Not trying to argue.
I'm going, right, 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 then I agree with what you're saying, but I would recommend that Council really look at this and see if there's different levels perhaps. Maybe partner more with organizations who, such as mine, who shouldn't have to pay like this much to provide a service. Thank you.
Say your name for the record.
Pete Myers, 716 West Olive Street. I'm here to talk about the Long Beach Polar Bears, and also support, of course, the AOH, Michelle O'Neill. Michelle O'Neill is probably my most favorite day of the year. The AOH has been a big supporter of the Long Beach Polar Bears as well. With that, us, the Polar Bears, Ray, the Fiddler, and Myers, and all the other volunteers that volunteer for the Polar Bears, you know, we raised money for the Make Wish Foundation. We raised over $6 million for the Make Wish Foundation, we granted 100 sort wishes, and it's really because of everything, you know, you all helped us out, and the lifeguards, you know, God bless them, you know, volunteer for us, the police departments there, the beach maintenance, you know, CSA. So, we do understand that there's a cost for our event, but we do feel that, you know, there's probably 100,000 items out there, between sweatshirts, t-shirts, magnets, you know, that say "Long Beach" on them, and that, that there's a price to goodwill that, that you can't really calculate, that, you know, we're bringing in probably, I mean, the police estimate that on Super Bowl Sunday, February, a real quiet time in the beach community, that we're bringing 20,000 people here, if not more. You know, that means people coming in that are spending money in restaurants, they're spending money in bars, they're, you know, going to brands, Gino's, they're, you know, pulling up their guest stands. There's a real benefit to having our events here. And, you know, I think the City Council, the budget meeting, you know, was brought up that, you know, we'll charge the Polar Bears X amount of dollars, I believe the figure was $50,000. And, and, you know, you might say, wow, you guys raised $6 million, what's $50,000 each year? But to us, that's, that's five wishes, you know, I'm sorry, it's 10 wishes that we're granting, you know, and that's kids with. So, I did see Mike Tagg on the board, I believe it was last Friday, and we did speak, and we did say, you know, $50,000 is not what we're even talking about, and it wasn't much, much longer than what he said. But we're really reaching out to you, because this whole event was really a community event. It was all of you, it was all of us, it's almost everyone in this room, I think, supports it because it's, because of the goodwill that it brings to our city, so we really hope that, you know, you go back and talk about this, that, that really, that the goodwill is priceless, and it's what makes this town one of the most dynamic, and, I'm getting buzzed, but, but really, there's a reason why we all love living here, and it's because of these community events, so thank you.
Any other speakers? You're settled?
Mary Wallace, Nauti State Hospital. The civics have a lot of good things, and the AOH, I've seen the gift scholarships, I've also seen big scholarships to children who were divorced or married in 9/11 or related tragedy. I've seen the Polar Bear step up, I've seen the civics step up and put the movies on for five years now, I think it is. I think you need to look at things on a sliding scale, and I think you just need to look at what the money is being raised for. It's not being raised for events, to go out and have a party, we are helping children, they're helping children, they're helping kids go to college. I, I, you're, you just can't bundle everything together like you do, and you do it time to time yet. You have to look at each thing. $250, did the price break? Do they make $250 each day for a permit? Or is it, they're paying $250 for three days? These guys are going to pay the same $250 for one day? It, you're really not fair to organizations that do bring people in. They bring people in, they spend the money, people go to dinner, they go on the boardwalk, and, and you just, this is becoming the city of no and money. That's it.
Kathleen O'Leary, 315 Market Street. I'm going to be the unpopular person here. I have great respect for every group that this year represents. However, you need to be able to pay your bills before you give to charity, and I'm speaking about the city's bill. Where are fiscal prices? It's great to give to charity, but this city needs to pay their bills, they're not doing that right now, and all these groups need to pay their bills. And I will say one thing about Irish Day and some of these other events, I don't go to them anymore because they're so crowded. Irish Day needs police presence because they let it get totally out of hand in past years. That thing about no alcohol on the week on the, and the Irish Day shouldn't have been done 20 years ago. It gets really ugly when the sun goes down after Irish Day, so it's not all sweetness and light and charity. There's some problems that these events are causing for the city, and I just feel that Long Beach should be able to balance their votes first, and maybe you could slim down these events, maybe you could prorate the permit fees, something like that, but I do feel police, sanitation, whatever goes into these events should be paid by the people who are holding them. Let them pull their, what is it called, their belts in like the city's pulling their belts. Thank you.
Good evening all, Tina Burey, Long Beach, New York. I'd like to say that these events embody the residents of Long Beach who do way more than the outsiders that we bring into Long Beach. Whether it be LPTGT, whether it be events as crap bears, et cetera, we cater to those events. We cater them to the way, in such, you have the obligation for use of alcohol. We have not been able to manage this process on the boardwalk on the beach, but you have been able to not allow those concessions on the boardwalk to serve alcohol. The events that you give permits to are selling, are serving, under their permit, under their licenses, if they get their temporary licenses, supposed to be beer, wine, and soda, cider, they're serving liquor. Where we had set up the concessions came to the game here and planned this place to monitor the alcohol usage, so there's a double standard going on here. Whether it's any event, we do more for people who come into this town to use our space, our beaches, our boardwalk, than we do for the business owners. I suggest before you make any changes, to your permit fees, all these, all these organizations here who raise money for local charities, for local kids and persons, to support the community at large, we should think about maybe putting together a committee of factions or people from each one of these groups and decide what's fair and equitable for everybody, for the city and for them. But we have to stop catering to all the outsiders and stop worrying about what's happening here first. And I think you should revisit your policy as opposed to the concessions on, I'm not here on there being, I want to be clear about that, but if you're going to allow them, these people, to take temporary permits to serve alcohol on our Ocean Beach Park, then we should allow our concessions to apply for permits to sell alcohol in their concessions. It can't be a double standard here, and we need to make sure that we're getting together with the residents and the people from each one of these groups and figure out a way to make everybody happy.
Evening Council members, I just asked if you could to, to leave this hearing open to continue with, because I believe, I requested some labor costs and information, which I believe you probably as well want to know the cost to each event, how to better manage the payroll if you can't be done. I'm sure that if there are volunteers needed and would want to assist, there are people out there. I know high school children would like to get community service, so that's an option. That's all, I'm just asking you to leave this open. I did receive a call at 5:00 today for the information that I foiled as far as the labor costs, and we've told that they're still putting it together, and that I will be getting to, so you know, and I think it's only fair, we will, thank you.
Just, just for clarification purposes, we will plan to leave it open anyway, which is one of the reasons we'll continue the hearing at the next meeting on the 3rd, and then we'll probably go around.
I want to talk to Judy, the, the, to state, Judy Viney told me that Long Beach aware, we're talking about section, the application for the use of alcohol, and one of the things I kind of wanted to ask you is it says, the granting or denial of that, remember, is that expression, the city clerk? Do you have criteria that are involved in what would, you know, specific criteria, what would cause you to accept, or do you want to keep written that criteria? Are you planning to have that?
Yeah, maybe it's, it's left up to the department, but obviously the department works very close to the City Manager, who helps us in my office in particular, to make sure that those concerns are addressed, and, I mean, really the best example I can give you is the one for Pride, where we set out, how many drivers are listed in, I mean, it's just, and they're all, and they're all City.
I'm sure you didn't. I'm really just going to say that you don't really need to reinvent the wheel, there are community, at the community, organizations such as the TDC, for instance, NIA, AAA, all have guidelines, very specific guidelines for managing alcohol at community events, which are very different, okay, than a day-to-day operation of a restaurant or a concession or a bar. These are one-time events, but one of the things that we are always concerned about is of course the use exposure. The guidelines put out by all of these organizations, I'm happy to share with you, but they're logical. Confined area. Confined area, the al, any alcohol that's served is served in a different, in a clear cup, so it's visible as opposed to other drinks. No more than one drink at a time. Check for ID. I could go on and on, and no one allowed to interact. Stop service at least one hour, if not two, before the event ends. In addition to all the liability and other things that.
But you were pointing out, I think you'd be surprised if you saw, for instance, the Pride Summit, they factor in those other things that you just mentioned.
Okay, but I'm suggesting.
I can work right here, I can make sense of it.
Not a specific criteria, we set the parameters perhaps, because it would be very different for, let's say, a parade, or you might say an area that's okay for, you know, people to have alcohol. There's a better control, right? And not to say we are, that is, anyway. Whereas a lot of the tournaments, the guidelines are still the same from all these major organizations that have studied it. Keep it separate. So, you know, that might be the give and take in that sort of organizations as well. At any rate, I'm here of our services, we are the experts in this, you know, here in Long Beach. And we're happy to share with you what we know, that's our role.
Thank you.
To answer every question, to our former council, is it possible to make some of the criteria available on our website? Send us through the transparency so that the community groups are aware of the fact we have certain regulations and that obviously the community can be aware of what those regulations are?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
My name's Carol O'Neill, I represent the Michelle O'Neill Foundation to benefit children with cancer and special needs. I live at 26 Ardiath Street here in Long Beach since 1972. First, I just want to say thank you for the cooperation that we have received over the past 21 years holding our volleyball tournament here in Long Beach. We are coming up to our 22nd hopefully on September 8th. We have a myriad of volunteers. I think we have organized our event in a way that it makes it the best it can be for the city and for the people in attendance. I understand that there are going to be some fees imposed, I don't know what they are. We go to state permanent fee, we go to state security, the night before and the night of. And we enjoy it over the year and year. I understand that people, as Steve Myers mentioned, consider it the, you know, the best day of the summer. I love to hear that, because I love the city. My job at the Michelle is the West End chick, I really hope that we continue to hold our events in the West End. And speaking of goodwill, I think it really needs to be considered that so many people that attend volleyball tournament seek their priority of it, they want to keep returning to it, and then they are here in our city to enjoy what the city has to offer. I'm really of course not prepared to say anything, but I'm glad you did give me the opportunity and I'm thankful again for the cooperation of the others. Thank you.
Brendan Haley, 68th Avenue, West End. Member of the West End Civic Association, just had a couple of questions. First one is, I've heard a lot about these organizations that do people work, do a lot of charity work. Also, do we bring in people to the city? Has the Office of Economic Development done a feasibility study? Will that happen if these organizations choose not to host these events in the coming year due to this application? So, the next part of that is, if they haven't done it, and again, there's been a lot of work put into this, for sure, but they really should consider looking at what would happen. So, as Mike pointed out from West Home as well, you may want to consider keeping this open till more information can be provided.
We've decided, it's already been decided that we'll keep it open and continue to do research on this as well.
But has, have you borne any assessment?
I don't think that there's been an official, but I mean, I think it's also at some point it is logical if large scale unless it don't take place, and there's obviously a significant impact. So, it's part of, now I'm saying we propose doing this. But there has not been an official feasibility study that's been done.
Well, take that into consideration, hope it can be done and help with that in your report.
Absolutely.
Any other comments?
A quick question, pressed in, West End, Long Beach. Regarding section 14317, which is pretty long. Regarding, she said that you're going to look at it, I can't understand that you've come up with this six or seven-page document without actually doing a feasibility study. How, how is it limited, how is it going to compare to a 10,000 people pariah event? It's just not people. So, and this is part, not the $250, but what it costs. And when you ask about having someone come to an official meeting as a consultant, does that mean when one of you or the police department come to a civic meeting, are we going to charge that, that's part of a special event? It's so vague and so complex that you really need to go back to the drawing board because it's too confusing for the general public to understand at this point. For example, is a coed using the Magnolia Center? Or me? Because the way I read it, it would be. That's the question.
Oh, I just answered your comment.
I can answer all your questions at that. Was that the only question?
Well, if you answer the question, then I would follow up with another.
Okay, well, I answered them all after your comments.
Okay, so that would be, would a civic or a coed that has Scott come to a meeting? Or at the library, are we going to charge for his services? That's the question, the last reaction.
I don't, as far as I know, I don't think there was any contemplation, nor do I think the definitions provide, as they're listed here, provide that a council person should, and also it doesn't cost the city anything for a council person to come to a meeting.
Well, we're not, or you're building the park.
Hold on, I'm just finishing your, I'm answering your question. As far as I know, I think it was contemplated that these are additional costs that the city incurred, and the city doesn't incur anything when a city council member comes to a civic association. It's not generated over time, we don't. With regard to the Magnolia Center, I think the definition also provides for certain parts of it.
Sure, and that is just, that would be consistent with the normal use of, what you're requesting would be consistent with the normal use of the Magnolia Center, and it wouldn't qualify as a special event nor would come under review of this legislation as a result.
So, at the library, that when somebody holds an event, like cases, women who, would that be considered a special event?
No.
Or if they had somewhere else others in the library, it better be an old case.
No, because it can be.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this involves the use of streets, sidewalks, parks, or other city property.
Well, that's other city property.
The library is a.
But it's not what the other.
I think the legislation is in contemplation, it's used for what it's generally used for. For example, a meeting, I mean, an old case center, the old case center do for youth events all the time. So, I don't believe that would be, and that was your example.
So, what?
I don't, or something, a meeting, a.
I'm trying to get clarification on, trying to, it's very challenging to talk to me.
I don't believe that that was, that that's the intent of the legislation, but we'll certainly in the next two weeks provide to ensure that it's absolutely clear. But that was not the intent, if it's being used for what it is in contemplation. Streets is not used for fair generally. So, that's something different, or a festival, or the boardwalk, or. I think that that's what's contemplating here, and if it requires some clarification, I think we'll, that was the purpose of keeping the hearings open and not voting on it today.
Thank you.
And just, just to answer that, for example, you just mentioned or referenced the library situation. The library events are not city, they're not city-related events. Also, the library events do not have additional costs in respect to, let's say, sanitation or the rec center being required to set something up. There are other hidden costs, and that's what this is about, and that's why we're having a conversation today with residents. I think there are a lot of questions and there are very, obviously valid concerns today because based on the comments today, everyone in some way is giving back to the city. And so, you're asking us now to make some decisions in respect to possibly the size of scale, possibly some way in which we can still work with all of the community groups. And so, again, just to echo what's being said here, we're just listening today, we're not voting on this today, but we're listening today, but we want you to understand that we have to present some legislation to you as a community. Once we have all the feedback, then we can go on, we can possibly say, well, we can amend certain aspects of this. But it's important to first have some feedback from the community, so it's not set in stone today. Because if you don't understand it, you have to reinforce it. So, obviously, this is a part of the dialogue.
Is the council willing to have community input? I just had Pete or somebody from AOH.
Oh, can you do my call, send it here? Oh, I'm sorry.
So, would council be willing to have community, community input from Pete or from Carol, or from someone from AOH, or the Electric Light Parade?
Absolutely, I think that's the.
So, further, anything beyond the hearing?
Well, we are having another hearing. We also have had a number of people email each of us, and I believe we've got, I'm guessing, most everyone. I think that that's, in the next two weeks, that is the opportunity. We're all accessible, and there's a, we're gonna have another hearing because we're leaving it open. So, if there's additional questions, or if there's a proposed amendments, they'll be made available. And there'll be another public meeting just like this for people to come in and raise their concerns.
Thank you.
Good evening, Councilwoman James Lynch. I'd like to follow up on one issue here we spoke about in regards to speaking to economic development. I, as you know, I'm on the chamber of Congress and I'm speaking here tonight. From my perspective, as the organizer of the Electoral Drive Committee, it's something that needs to be brought and you need to understand it. Now, I'm glad that you're not voting on it tonight, although it would be a mistake, Councilwoman Moore, if the people didn't come out tonight, as has been in the past, votes have been taken. And this would be very detrimental to all these groups that volunteered their time. My brothers here at the AOH, the O'Neill Foundation, the Polar Bears, volunteers for all their time. So, what I'd like to see come before, with this resolution when it's adopted, because something has to be done, we know that. Everybody has to do their fair share. But the city needs to look at it in an economic development, this is organic economic development that costs the city nothing but their labor. And when I say their labor, here's my issue. Do we need to have every city employee at every event? This is something that needs, you need, the city needs to work with us and right-size these type of events. We don't need the entire police department, we don't need 19 specials on the boardwalk there. The city needs to sit down and be able to say, okay, you know what, we're working this. If they don't come to us the week before and say, this is what it is, or it's not happening. We need you to say, in the resolution, we'll start this four months out so that we can negotiate this and see what works well for everybody, to see that it's actually feasible. Because what, what's intended here, and if it's not backed up by the people behind it, what's gonna happen is these events aren't gonna happen. And it's gonna be detrimental to the businesses. And that's a fact. We have a short opportunity. We've tried to create things like the Electoral Drive, which does well for the families, it creates a family atmosphere, and the businesses do well where they otherwise have never done before. But these are other events. The businesses have adapted to that and have, have, have learned how to make their business work around that by doing promotions and so forth. They have a finite window to operate on it, to make, to, to, to survive the winters. And this needs to be understood by the entire council, that we give away, we give away our beach to certain groups that get, that they get, you know, they get grants. We don't do that, we do this on our own dime. And we need the help from the city. It can't be a hundred percent turnout, it's gonna cost this and you have to pay. The city has a certain responsibility to economically help them. The tax, the, the businesses pay a 27% tax rate. That has to be looked at and understood, because if these things go away, and they work, some of them work, then that's not gonna help the city at all.
Thank you.
Good evening, United City Council, I'm just speaking as a resident, as you can tell by my dress today. But I'd like to look, for example, to other municipalities in the United States, determine what they do with events. And a wonderful city, I think we can all agree, is the city of New Orleans. They've had a tremendous turnaround since Hurricane Katrina, that mirrors the turnaround that we've had since Superstorm Sandy. And their events permanent process is absolutely fascinating. Anybody can have an event in the city of New Orleans. If, if corporation council like Estacy would like to go down to New Orleans and throw a parade for himself, he could do that. It's just a matter of, you fill out an application, you have a dialogue with the municipality, you tell them how many people you're expecting to your event, what you're trying to do with your event, if there's gonna be any need for sanitation at your event, and they simply send you a bill in advance of your event, and you pay it, and that's it. It's really a small permit fee as a result of all the municipal services that you consume, whether it's police and sanitation or otherwise. And I really think the city of Long Beach would be well advised to look into that rather than have the taxpayer subsidize events. And these are great events, these are wonderful events, we have in the city of Long Beach. But the taxpayers shouldn't be, shouldn't be subsidizing. We should be supporting organizations and having their events, but really the expenses are something that should be covered by the events themselves, whether they are for-profit, whether they are nonprofit, whether they are good, and whether they're bad, we should apply it all the way. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Eileen Heschin, I just have a few comments. First, I think that you have figured out how much pride it costs because they're gonna pay us back. So, you know what's, what's the city was, you know what you were getting back, and so forth. But I wonder if you've done that for the other events. So, a sliding scale, as Mary had suggested, is the best idea because Allison Blanchett's thing doesn't cost as much as the Electric Light Parade, and that doesn't cost as much as Irish Day or these other things. So, I really think you should put, you have to look at the cost of all these things, whether it's police overtime, or garbage collection, or whatever it is, and then the benefit of it. But I don't know how you do that. How do you know how many extra slices of pizza Geno sold that day? But that's what has to be done. And what I fear is that it's gonna take a lot of expensive consultants to figure that out. So, you figure that out, I guess. But I would also like to say that, I say this most of the time that I come up here, we need the citizens committed. And in this case, it would include those people who have these big events and small events so they can give their input, because it's not fair that the, you know, Allison pays $250 and the big ones pay $250, it's gotta, it's gotta be different. Also, when you consider all this stuff, I think you should be very specific about what is a city venue that needs to be paid for. Is Kennedy Plaza the city venue? Is the Martin Luther King Building the city venue? And if it is, who's having alcohol there? They're getting special permits there in a child's place, I don't get that. But anyway, that's. I don't get that. But anyway, that, you need to be specific about that. And then also, what about a rally, or protest, or picketing, or something like that? Those are usually, or they're very often spontaneous. Would you arrest people for gathering at Kennedy Plaza? Would you charge them afterwards? Do they have to apply for a permit to gather more than five people, or more than twenty people? There's also a lot that has to be thought about here. Um, there were a lot of smart people up here tonight, too, that brought up a lot of things that I hadn't thought about. And I think you have a lot of thinking to do before you do anything on it, because it can't be done at the next city council meeting or the next one I'm to that. Thank you very much.
And just, just that I mentioned the hearing, we're gonna keep the hearing open. So if there's additional comments, you can, you know, provide them by email ahead of time or come to the next city council meeting.
Okay. I, one, one is about the city of Long Beach, where our work is, the hearing is going on this afternoon. And two is a resolution authorizing the city manager's progress with studies pointing to, and materials on heavy business and luxurious property.
Uh, the amendment for this item is where it says three lines on the bottom, eight one six four zero dot five. So I'm just gonna propose an amendment to this item. Uh, three lines on the bottom where it says eight one six four zero dot five four four one zero, municipal building supplies and materials. I'm gonna amend it to say eight one six two zero dot five four four one zero. It's just a different code, but it's reflected, gives a municipal building supplies and materials, though.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Does anybody have any comments? Has it been?
The council?
No.
Any comments on the panels on this item? Okay, check them.
And in phrase resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the program to purchase fire hydrants, and has new cases to solve for the bill.
Okay. Uh, any comments from the council on this item? Any comments from the panel? Ready? Are you speaking on this item?
Yes.
Well, yeah, I couldn't tell. Sorry. I couldn't tell who you were talking to. Okay.
The Royal District, I'm looking for, um, this is a familiar gripe I have. I have a new school board all the time. When I see that there's only one bidder, it means we're not doing something right to get people to bid. I don't know, you know, there, there's so many things that, so many requirements, but I know, and I know we give in the school board, there are always ways to open it up. There are always to advertise. You might not be obligated to do it, but we do have an obligation to the citizens to try to get more bidders. One bidder is really not a bidder. Okay?
Thank you.
I wanna make a comment on the one bid and one type hydrant that we are now using in the city of Long Beach. There's six hundred and fifty fire hydrants in the city. We have five different types of hydrants. That requires an inventory, and the average age, by the way, on hydrants is about seventy years, and probably seventy-five years is the life of a hydrant. Uh, that requires keeping an inventory of stems, uh, valves, operating nuts, caps, for several different types of hydrants. So several years ago, the city standardized on the single lock hydrant. Uh, there may have been some disagreement about that hydrant or not that hydrant, but the advantage of the single lock hydrant is that the body of the hydrant is actually guaranteed for twenty-five years. And with a lot of the salt water, and, and the air, and the flooding that we've had in the city, a lot of the existing hydrants didn't fare very well in terms of, uh, the bodies of the hydrants actually lasting. So it's the only hydrant you can get a twenty-five year guarantee on. And again, as we try to replace them over a period of time, and we have one single type of hydrant, it will reduce the cost to make repairs. It will reduce the cost in carrying inventory to repair those hydrants. So, uh, well, it's not typical to have one item, something like a fire hydrant or a water meter. It is very important to try to standardize on that type of hydrant or that type of water meter, uh, just for ease of operation and use of maintenance.
Thank you.
I implore the resolution authorizing annual allocation of community development funds for the way to the county area.
Ask our department that.
Good evening, and thank you for considering this resolution. So the Community Development Block Grant Program, or process, is run by the United States Department of Housing and Area Development. We look at three national objectives for this program. One, to provide benefits to low moderate income individuals, to prevent storms of bright, and to provide, uh, funding for projects that are in particular urgency, to the rural community. Uh, just to give a little background on the need, Long Beach, in Long Beach, eight point three percent of individuals live on a high level. Almost one in four children under the age of five would live on a high level, so this budget's mitigated some of these concerns. Uh, so just to give you the backdrop of the process, uh, you open the application up to the public and to get their projects and recommendations in spring of two thousand seventeen. Uh, you follow, uh, this follow our review and award decision by Nassau County, and that came in winter of, uh, twenty seventeen. Uh, and now, obviously, we're, we're going to authorize this project. And to give a little, uh, background on some of the projects and highlights, and some, um, industry, we're gonna get thirty thousand dollar budget, fifteen thousand dollars go to make a community garden at the Hoover Congress Park. Uh, that garden would, uh, produce specials that would go to our senior program, that will encourage healthy inhabitants, as well as save some money there. There's ten thousand dollars for food plant, planting, and now packing in, uh, city beach, all the essential tracks. There's seventy thousand for senior program and actual magnolia, and, um, at the MLK Center. And there's thirty thousand for youth groups, through deployment training. Uh, and there's also twenty thousand dollars for non-profit program at the MLK Center and the Lunge Slots of the Civic Association. And lastly, a very interesting, great program that we introduced, it was a hundred and thirty thousand dollars from our going to price assistance, and that will lend, uh, money to, uh, small existing businesses, uh, to prepare their economic development by hiring, uh, low wage workers. Uh, so that's a little background of the project. If you have any questions, you may now.
Any questions from the council?
Just have, uh, just for clarification, I apologize to have a seat.
Sure.
Each year, do we receive less and less amount for community development funds?
That is correct. Over the past ten years, we've seen a decline. Uh, there are three factors in there, including, um, from the federal government. We've seen that program decrease, uh, from that side of Congress. And additionally, the county, we, our process, we apply through the county, uh, and the county weighs and, uh, given the need across the county, they've been, you know, making other decisions. Uh, so we've been trying every year to apply more money to increase our engagement, so we can see that trickle first.
Any other questions?
Not really a question, but, um, once again, thank you for your leadership in this area. If you could just kind of just briefly share and explain to the audience a little bit more of, uh, the new program, which is the Micro Enterprise Assistance Program. I know that this would be something that they could share with the neighborhood in terms of this opportunity.
Absolutely. And thank you for your leadership and bring that to our attention. So the Micro Enterprise Program, we originally applied for this, um, last year with the idea of trying to help startups. Obviously, Long Beach has a great vibrant startup community that they're trying to develop and support. Unfortunately, uh, this program is not going to be able to help them. It's only gonna be able to existing businesses. But to give a little background, I worked with the National Development Council, the city leadership at the county's housing and urban development, to build out this program. And essentially, we'll do, it will give, um, uh, micro loans to have a size of about twenty-five thousand dollars to an existing business. Remember that, uh, under those loan requirements, the pressure will pay five percent interest rate off our interest after that. Uh, and it'll be required to hire low wage moderate income workers. So this is essentially going to be, uh, a pot of money that will give economic development to the city, uh, specifically for low wage workers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Just have, just a couple of questions on, on the program. We put the salary, would that be a stop creation? So if it's not possible, if we, if you don't apply the money down here for this, for this position, will the city have to pick that up as they hire? Because it says administration salary.
Sure.
With the big line, forty thousand dollars change.
Sure.
So the salaries are for?
Sure. So the administration salary for the program, it goes to bring about sixty percent of both my salary and all the salaries that go into the program, um, so that, you know, city design for the price of, for the price of.
And so then it's not a security, which would be a part of the, uh, and that's been done in the past, because they don't report the salary.
It's always been done.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this item?
Good evening. Sorry to bother you right now, but.
Please, no.
Josh Shannon, through the P D S Long Beach Street. Usually I pull up the roll before you're thinking of a left-hand item. Right now, there are helicopters flying around, electric hours. Somebody driving, they're driving somebody. Pump is at the very, at this very moment there. People playing volleyball right at that spot. I'm not talking about the whole area. Hey, I'm a ten-year-old from, sitting there at the pump.
I, I don't mean to interrupt you. I, I.
I'm speaking to your board right now.
No, 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 I understand. And I, I'm sure we have a, older police and fire are there.
I guess.
And I'm fairly certain that they're the experts. None of us are.
Paying attention, because it's this thing to them, and nobody can give an answer while they're in the waves. And somebody right now at that spot, you, you see all those engines over there? They're drowning right there, and when you see your way, you could buy a slap with your volleyball hands. And for more sense of it, I think you should address.
Okay.
I understand. Do it right now.
I understand. I, I, at this moment, right now, we're, we're on a ticket item, and we, our thoughts and prayers are certainly with the family, the individual, all of our responders, and they are the experts in this. So if there was, if they think that that was the intended to be done, I'm sure they would do it.
Well, well, you know, well, they, they, everybody knows.
Okay, okay. Sir, we're gonna, we're gonna move on with the meeting. Okay? Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Okay. Let's move on to that side.
And prior to resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the contract for the resolution, they placed in the council and city hall.
Okay. Are there any questions from the council? Any questions from the public?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I wanted to keep this thing. I, I apologize for having to, but I just know that the A D C, that Rowan and I have been, uh, together on this mission for over ten years. And I, um, I had the opportunity to meet with our D P W, um, head at a meeting the other day. And this building is just falling apart. I don't understand why we keep plugging money into it. Literally falling apart. People in here are actually sweating. There's no air conditioning. Why, why do we keep pouring good money into this horrific building? That's my.
Comment, question?
All agree with all of now that the asbestos is flying out, and we're not okay with that.
That's, that's on record. Thank you. Thank you. I don't think, I will say that I, I think I need to speak for everyone when I say that we're not okay. We would love to build a new city hall. I think everyone would love to, but the amount of funds and adaptation, particularly bonding, is, is not something that we're prepared to do at this time, unfortunately. But it is something that we would like to do. Legislative Board?
Well, Legislative Board is coming. Just to remind you, Liz, once we thank you for your advocacy with respect to A D A issues, I think that's, that's critical. But also just to remind everyone, and I think you don't mind any reminder, that, um, we still have to move forward with our search with respect to a city manager. Uh, and that's a part of leadership, gives vision. And so we're still in a situation where we've not, at this time, come forward with an overall vision. Once that happens, then we can begin to, to move forward with all of the various initiatives. And I think that pretty much sets aside your.
Legislative Board wants.
Thank you.
Uh, Denise, with thirty-six Ohio Avenue. Just a quick follow-up, because Liz, I really wish that maybe you could follow, like, you have the block, that Village of Autumn Park town, where they had an old, you know, rundown Village Hall and a banquet out there, and they donated that location. So, uh, Village Hall is now the old Bank of America building. So I firmly request to them, so I wish the same kind of, in a way, that you could get something.
I think we would all like a decent environment. But I just have to say that, in regard to this with the replacement bathrooms in city hall, um, is this the same company that did the bathrooms on the boardwalk? Because I just, I was just here for meeting and got to see what they looked like. And I have to say that I'm really, really impressed with the work that was done there. They're beautiful, they're A D A compliant. Um, the work was exceptional. So I'm hoping that, um, I guess it's the Patriot Organization was the same group that did those bathrooms, that bathroom, and we're doing the bathrooms for the rest of city hall, because you gotta, with it there, so.
Actually, I would love to tell you, we did the fourth floor bathrooms internally. An hour between the staff and the bathroom.
Let me ask you then, if we already can do something in-house, and we know that we have crew workers, and they have a record of doing a job, a very, a very good job, you know, to provide something for us, and I'm almost positive that it would be cheaper than if we hired an outside, uh, company to do it. We know that they're union, you know.
It's my understanding, I don't mean to interrupt you, but it's my understanding that there was a number of discussions between, uh, the beach maintenance supervisor with the D P W commissioner at Tuolumne, which was something that would, even timelines, given the season that it would be done, and additional factors, and that was one of the discussions that we had.
Yeah. Part, part of the reason, too, is when we do do that, it takes a lot longer because we have to do it in time, so there's no other projects going on within the city. So on the fourth floor, we have this legal department, the engineering department, the D P W, and so we could suffer a little bit. But this bathroom on the second floor is in the court system, and, uh, you know, it creates some, a lot of issues. So the ideas are contracted, and they could stay on top of it. Unfortunately, when we opened the walls up and found asbestos and some pipes that had to be replaced, uh, this delayed a little bit, but it was still a little long, a lot quicker. We get to court, pack up and running with their own bathrooms, where they don't have to share the bathrooms, and the rest of city hall.
Okay, thank you very much. That's, thank you. Are there any other questions on this item? Seeing none, next item.
I am six is a resolution authorizing the use of community development block grant funds to furnish the labor and materials to make food pantry at the new life of Church of Christ, A D A accessible, and the transfer of funds.
It's my, which then is an item.
Yeah, I'd like to propose an amendment to the item. Uh, the paragraph that begins with resolve, the first sentence should read, resolved by the city council of the city of Long Beach, New York, that. the City Council of the City of Long Beach, New York, that city manager being hereby is authorized into into a contract with East Coast USA Construction, eighty-seven dash seventy-seven hundred and eighteen, Street Richmond Hill, New York, one one four one eight, for furnishing of labor and materials to make the food pantry at the New Life Church of Christ, A D A accessible at a cost of fifty-nine thousand dollars. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Are there questions from the council on this item? Do you want to partake?
So this project would be done with community development block grants, which I mentioned earlier. And just to give a little bit of background on why this particular project, so twelve point five percent of our households are food insecure, and of those twelve point five percent, only five point nine percent actually think that food systems be a snap. So we've seen throughout Long Beach, you know, food insecurity here, and we've seen grassroots organizations and nonprofits and churches step up and really provide the services that were to be done. New Church of Christ, they opened about a decade ago, every other Saturday, or seemingly the first or third Saturday of every month, they're giving out food to the entire public. And when I go there, it's always dozens of people there. So we definitely want to make sure that it's going to be accessible, friend, right now the entrance is not as well as the doorway, so these ones we go to handle that.
Do you need to be a member of the church in order to access the food pantry?
No, you don't have to be a member of the church. You don't have to practice that religion. That's not a question that's asked at all until this is built.
Any questions from the public?
Good evening, Jacob. Is this considered a public works project? Is this contractor obligated to pay for family wages and otherwise?
Picking up the pastor? Oh, I'm sorry. Miss Hatch and I didn't see you standing there.
This sounds like a fabulous thing to be doing. And I know we have food pantries at St. Mary's, St. Ignatius, and several other places. And I know a lot of organizations, A A R P, the Girl Scouts have food drives all the time. And I know how many people in Long Beach need this, so this is a very important thing. So I hate to be a downer, but is this something that the city should pay for? And if we did, since it's a church, and if we do, then are we going to do one in all those other places that I mentioned?
It's through, it's not through regular city funds, it's through the community block grant funds. And that was why I specifically...
It's a grant as well.
I'm sorry, we're not paying for it, the grant?
It's through the, it's through the community development funds that we just, we just talked about. This was from a different, a different years fund, if I understand correctly. And one of the reasons I asked the question as to whether you have to be a member of the church was I am aware of the fact that there was an agreement that ensures that everybody can access it from day to turn.
Okay, I'm sorry, I must not have heard that.
But it's through, it's the resolution specifically says community development grant funds.
So it's grant, it's grant money, we're not paying for it.
The federal money that we talked about, the occasion, the federal government has created this, it's historic, and that's why we're celebrating our forty-third year. So the federal government, through HUD, allows what we call, as Council and I have already stated, this community block grant. And through that, there's a book on thing where you can look to see how they can improve or give support to communities. And so the pedestrian is then here allowing, obviously it's universal, anyone can participate. But the other key piece to this is the fact that now this particular grant through the construction will allow for the A D A situation. So in other words, now people have access into the building. Because the church itself has been serving people for many years, however, as the community ages, people obviously will also have the right to have access. And so now through this particular construction will allow for people to have the opportunity to take part in the process because the church serves food on a regular basis.
Thank you very much, I vote yes.
Also a follow-up to this section of questions, we have done other churches, we've done St. Mary's in the past, I know other churches have applied, and we've applied, and we have this to hear currently. And I encourage everyone in the spring, as we apply community development block grants to comport these sort of projects that will enable our communities to serve, for those who need it better.
Absolutely, well said.
Just one quick question, A D A, Michael Delory, Long Beach, New York. Is the interest of City Hall A D A compliant? Because I do for a one-time, I saw a video or a clip about, I think it was Liz Trussman trying to get in, and she may be able to answer that, is that...
No, we're not.
Can community development block grants be also used to possibly enhance the entrance here for the push button door? That's all my question.
Thank you.
Good evening. Pastor Moses, Pastor New Life Church of Christ, which was for a special street in Long Beach. And thank you for considering this proposal for the New Life Church of Christ, and not only for the New Life Church of Christ, but for the community. Just really for the community, because we do service the community, we have been servicing the community for many years. And as a matter of fact, you know, we were one of the stakeholders that supported this community with Sandy Head, because all of our truckloads of food that were coming to us and we deliver, we've diverted to central location for all of those pieces are taken. So we've always been ready and prepared to serve this city, and we still stand prepared to serve this city. And to answer your question, if you come to the door, if you drive to the safety bin, if you come to the door and say you got to leave, you leave.
And that's right.
That's how we basically, we can't determine whether you have to leave because of what you, when you look for what you drive, anything like that. So anyone that comes to the door, says I have a need, we need to leave. And we provide families at least three to four days worth of food for three minutes, three to four days. So we thank you for your consideration, and like I said, this is what also is doing great work that we're doing, because we do service a large amount of specifically challenged individuals that would like to come in and see the things and how the operation is going on, to get their own dinner, and not have to have them brought out too. So we definitely want them to feel a part of the community and they can to have that equity with that brings the community to be serviced like everyone else. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Just wanted to bring something to everybody's attention about the A D A entrances at the City Hall. We just recently had a hazard mitigation plan approved by FEMA to hide in the first floor. As part of that, I'm going to address my own security, but the A D A access to City Hall. I did meet with Ms. Truss then last week, and by the side of Ford, and we discussed some temporary means of being able to tell when there is somebody that needs access to the building outside. We're working on a short-term solution right now, but within the next year and a half to two years, when we do modify the entire first floor and haunt the outside of the building from storms, all those issues will be addressed.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on this item? If there's none, next item.
Item seven is resolution authorizing the city manager to adjourn the contract for credit card processing services for the sole responsible bank.
Comments from the council? Comments from the public?
Solomon Wasserman, one forty-five East Penn Street, resident of the city for thirty-one years. I have experience with the processing companies. Often times, at least in my experience, they charge excessive amount of money. There must be alternative ways how to do it. There are companies who are substantially cheaper than this profit, poor profit organization, chase or some other organization. If you loan the council is of interest, I would like to help out, to find out a way to minimize the cost to the consumers who will be doing the process, the benefits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seventy-two, boy, same thing. I know there was a rebuttal on the soul bitter for the fire hydrants, saying that it's a particular type of fire hydrant. I don't know what that has to do with soul bitter. But regardless, there are hundreds, hundreds of credit card processing companies, soul bitter. There's, we're not doing it something, right? We can't, out of those hundreds of companies, we can't get more than one to bid. We're either not advertising right, or we're not writing it right, or we're not putting it where people can see it. Just I'm asking you if you can do better than that. I'm two out of the three bids today, soul bitter. There's got to be a better way. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Next item.
Item eight is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing on special noise barriers. Designers publication only, hearing will be held July seventeenth at seven P M. Item nine is resolution authorizing publication for hearing of employees who authorize a financing for fourth of separation payments to afford the benefit of employees of the city storming. So I state the estimated total cost thereof is two point five million dollars, appropriating set amount therefore, and authorizing the issuance of not to exceed two point five million dollar bonds of said city to finance corporation. Designers for publication only, and hearing will be held July, sorry, at seven P M. On to the board. Item one is accordance to Mexico ordinances in City Hall, which are going to guard the merchants. Adoption of this item?
I will.
I will.
Delory, have you worked that out?
Yes.
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 Item twenty is resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase some of these public supplies and materials on an as needed basis for the loss responsible debt. Adoption of this item?
I will.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Item twenty is resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase fire hydrants on an as needed basis for the sole responsible debt.
I will. I will.
Yes.
Yes.
Item twenty is resolution authorizing annual allocation of community development funds for the forty-third for every year.
I will.
I will. Yes.
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 Item five is resolution authorizing the city manager to maintain the contract for demolition replacement of bathrooms in City Hall. Delory, have you worked that out?
Yes.
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 Item six is resolution authorizing the use of community development block grant funds to furnish the labor and materials to make the food pantry at the New Life Church of Christ A D A accessible and the transfer of funds.
I will.
I will.
Just want to once again recognize Pastor Moses, I can see also his first lady is there, also members of the congregation. I just once again extend thanks on behalf of the city council with respect to your service for the community. There are so many families, as well as their children, that would benefit from the service, so I vote yes.
Yes.
Item seven is a resolution authorizing the city manager to adjourn the contract for credit card processing services for the sole responsible debt.
I will.
Yes.
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 Item twenty is resolution authorizing publication for hearing on special noise barriers.
I will.
I will.
Yes.
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 Item number nine is resolution authorizing publication for hearing of the ordinance authorizing financing for fourth of separation payments to or for the benefit of employees of the city, stating the estimated total cost thereof is two point five million dollars, appropriating set amount therefore, and authorizing the issuance not to exceed two point five million dollar bonds of said city to finance and property.
I will.
Yes.
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 City manager's holy personnel reporting and following up city clerk will make motion to close the meeting.
I will.
I will.
Yes.
Yes. Why don't we just take a five-minute recess?
You guys just do a line of nine. What did you just do with I am nine? Can you hear me?
It's all for publication. It's the hearing will be at the next meeting.
It's on only for publication. But I'm gonna ask you, I'm gonna ask you to have a seat.
Sir, it's on for publication, please. Try to keep it under control, thank you. Press your order to five-minute break.
We'll take Arisa.
Liz Trussman came to our team, she sent someone a tomato.
He's so cool here. Now I find it.
You're the person, you spoke, right?
Yes.
I totally agree with you. I run a nonprofit and I teach bicycle pedestrian traffic safety. So, yeah, yeah, so I do a thing over here called Lemonade Pedal. I do it for the plaza, city gives me money, I do everything. And they make me pay, and put permit, and so 250 becomes our company and send a charge. And so, when I say I'm studying that, same as some other organizations that raise a lot of money and they require sanitation. I'm like, should I join the community service? Because the city doesn't do any education at all, traffic, um, bicycle pedestrian safety. And we have such a high neighborhood. It's such a neat. I do, it's so cute. I'm gonna try that, I'm gonna try a bigger, more good quality. Fortunately, I have to, but it's not a priority to me. I appreciate what you said.
Hello, everybody. Hi, people behind me. Oh, Mindy, that works. Hi, people online. I am talking about handicap parking spots. And I'm going to echo I think Henson's shirt that says, "You're not outraged, you're not paying attention." Because I have noticed that there are people in our community, and probably not people behind me, that are using these handicap parking spots with their blinkers on, running into Genos, running into Five Guys, thinking that they can just run in and run out. And I just want to say that I love to be able to do my little run in and run out. And even though my run in and run out is not like theirs, I think there needs to be implication. So I went to the police department and I asked, "What is the fine if somebody gets caught?" And it's only $100. I thought it was $100. So, I saw a guy stop in shop, and he was waiting for his wife with his blinkers on. And I said to him, sir, in his Mercedes, by the way, not the anti- Mercedes drivers. I said to him, "Sir, what would you think about $100 fine?" And he just went like that. So I visited many different states, and some states, the first fine is $500. And I think maybe, in the fiscal crisis that we're in, that the $100 fine is two minutes ago. And that maybe we raise the fine for somebody that parks illegally. Maybe, just maybe, that money will increase. You guys will see that these little people that are blinking, wittering in those handicap spots is a lot, and it happens in the West End, it happens everywhere in the city. I'm not the only one that knows that. I think that is a very, that's not acceptable, and that we definitely look into the incentives in our ability to raise every happy.
Yeah, I echo that statement. Thank you, Sharon and Mindy. First of all, I think it's also about raising awareness. Okay, so if it hasn't come a place where we as a community become sensitive to other people, and so, one, many of you are on social media, maybe as a city, we can send out a message that can be shared throughout the city, in terms of using social media for good. That's the purpose of it, raising awareness. We can do this for a month, just sending out messages reminding people to be sensitive to other neighbors within the community, that we're a community, that we need to include all people within the community. And so, I think, I'll definitely follow up with the council to see just different innovative ways in which we can get the message out. I think a lot of people, because they need it, they have a need, I need to get into Genos, we're not really thinking, we're not being sensitive to other people. And it's just really raising awareness, and also obviously increasing our education efforts with respect to people who have access and need access.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wasserman? Did you want to speak, Pastor?
Solomon, Solomon Wasserman, 145, he spent two, I have a wish, a ticket for $200 when I didn't have, I had an expired handicap ticket. I want to talk about something else. In order to have it proven, it's not for the service, for the post, but I went and secretary from the administrator team over here, here is the date, stamp date, May 24th. I made a proposal, a five paragraph proposal, how to improve financial state of the city. Everything is common sense. Some of them smells with millions of dollars, some might take a year to implement, but nevertheless, it's a serious proposal, practical, how to do it. On the top of it, since I'm limited in time, if you let me, I will read it. If not, I would like to propose the second paragraph to the same point. Is that to let me for the position of a deputy, or maybe even the administrator of the city, if you consider. Provided that I will be still able to do a full-time job over here, and in my own time to conduct my business as a private enterprise. Thank you. Do you want to have a copy of my proposal? Probably you didn't see it.
Sure, I will.
Because I can't bet on shell, I can't bet on shot part of it. But if you take a look and give it back to me, thank you.
Okay, the best. Uh, Ms. Walker?
My name is Sheila Walker. First, I'd like to say that the city is moving a lot better. Because people are partying in our block. Right here, speakers, lots of, um...
You shouldn't have to speak into this game.
Okay, so I'm saying that the city is moving a lot of presence. People are parking, commuters are parking on the block, the first block towards train station. My block being one of them. Sometimes I can home, I can build your parking lot. Sometimes I can park blocks away where I live. People leave their cars there, and they go on home trips. And when I visited the police department downstairs, they, I mean, the traffic department, they said that it's a two week time range, they didn't park their car, maybe it was five. I don't think it's fair to the residents that live there. And I would hope that the city can see some ways that they can return that and be that the revenue. Because you have a big lovely parking lot here, and the people who are parking on our block are staging the beach that they should remain to commute into the city and park their cars closer. One of my recommendations is maybe possibly having some type of, um, lock badge or stickers to put in your car, and stating that that's the block that you're wanting to directly do the block for, somehow. Showing that that's the block you belong on, if you park there, you know, for however long. However, if you're not, if you don't belong to that block, then it's a two hour, maybe, three hour toll. But it's not fair for the resident that we can't park on our own lot, right in front of our own. Thank you.
First, on the, as far as the parking garage, parking garage, it had the last few years been sold out. So the garage is currently at capacity. We really can't push it anymore, because it's into the garage, unfortunately. And as far as, we've looked at residence zone parking, but to do residence zone parking, we require an act of the state legislature. It's not something we can implement on or off.
So, I'm having a little trouble reading his name. Randall? Thank you, sir. Just take your, your name to the record.
Harry Randall Longley. And first, I want to thank Mr. Bendo and Mr. Moore for rejecting the bond last bit of the month. And basically, what I want, that's what I want to talk about. Have we found out who signed the payoffs for Sneerson and the others? Okay, so, that's basically what the neighborhood, I've been here for 40 years. Okay, instead of talking about beaches, instead of talking about what's going on, everybody is talking about the illegal payoffs, if they were illegal, but we're not hearing anything about it as a cover up. And just want to say, if the payouts were illegal, then you're stealing from taxpayers. And I want to, I want to know who signed the payouts, and legal action taken against the party of parties. And if you signed the payouts and didn't know they were illegal, I'm asking for your resignation of that party of parties, but not knowing their job. All right, so I would appreciate it every time I can see you. All right, and again, thank you, Mr. Bendo, thank you, Mr. Moore, and I hope that you reject it. The next bond issue until we find out where these payouts went, and welcome. Thank you very much.
I think Henson, we're waiting a long time for a new city manager, which makes me think that you're really looking into it very hard and working very hard at finding the best candidate. And I appreciate that. There's one thing that's in the list of, you know, what you're hoping to find in the city manager, and it says, "The person must live in the city within 90 days after getting hired." I'm assuming that's so that the person who is hired is a real member of our community, sends their kids to our schools, lives here, works here, you know. I mean, is active, like he has family here, you know. And it has most, not all, but many of previous city managers did. Is that the reason why you have that? So that they'll be a member of the community? You can just finish your, why don't you finish your comment? I have three different topics. They will respond to them. Okay. The next thing is the beach mats. I see a beach mat on Oralton, and it goes halfway down the beach, which leads to the hottest part of the beach. And I hate to think that people who are in wheelchairs have to stop at that point with no access to the water and sit on the hottest part of the beach. You know, it's not fair. Every year, we talk about these beach mats. They can't possibly be that expensive, or even if they are, get them, and get them to where they'll do some good, and get the people to water. And then the third thing is, item number nine, separation pay, which you have tabled, is a very important thing to talk about. I didn't table it, not tabled, I'm sorry. It was on for publication. And the hearing is being held at the next meeting. Okay, the hearing will be held at the next meeting. You canceled one of the meetings recently because of, you know, whatever reason it was, which shows that you have the right to cancel or change any meeting. July 3rd, really? This is a very, very important thing to talk about, the separation payment. You saw how many people left when you took a five-minute break. You saw an entire group leave once you were finished with one of the items. And that happens all the time, but July 3rd, that tells me that you're trying to cover something else, because nobody's going to be here on July 3rd, it's the night before July 4th. The separation payment, Mr. Dragan Stixey, you had said that it could not be clawed back, but I've just been reading on my...
That's not, that's, that's a characterization of my words and speech.
Oh, what did you say? You said, you said you had done research on it?
Yeah, I said that from the best of our knowledge, you've done great difficulty. The city would have to hire a very, an accounting firm.
We're always hiring extra people, but to get that money back makes sense.
If you want to answer, then you're gonna have to wait for your question.
Okay.
So as I mentioned previously, on a number of occasions, the city would have to hire an accounting firm, probably legal team as well, to ensure that, that's what I said, that's why I was saying.
Okay, after you, you know, you said you did a lot of research. I've read a lot of ads, and it looks like, I was reading about a company that had overpaid all of their 4,000 employees, and they are paying it back in their weekly installment. Well, apparently, if it's done with thousands of people, it can be done. And that was $2 million.
Is that maybe?
And we don't know how much of that $2 million was legal, how much of it was an overpayment, how much of it shouldn't be paid because the separation pay had no separation embedded to it. So, I would like you tonight to change that July 3rd meeting to a time when somebody else can be here, because nobody's gonna show up. It is not fair to the people who care. So we want you to know that. David Barco? I speak, or Barco, and I think...
No, you quite well, my handwriting's bad.
Sorry.
My David Barco, long-term handwriting, 535, by the doorway. I'd like to say, I guess we could allow people to say, uh, thank you, I'm going to work for, uh, building a... I guess also, I'd like to, I'll be less often repeat everything, uh, from you, from you said. I really don't understand any other reason to have a vote on July 3rd. Kind of hide something. It's been clear listening to you, you know, should build a name job, earning and stuff, that you actually don't own that type of ship. And we're talking to the numbers here, and without any explanation or clarity about how they were arrived at, or how they were voted, it's a little bit disconcerting in, in, in stat here. Corporate counsel typically is questioning like, "Oh, you're really hard to sort this out." Well, no, sort it out.
I've never, sir, sir, I've never said that.
Well, no, actually, you did.
No, no.
So actually, you don't say anything behind every yes or no. Everything's so weird. Sort it out, so you don't help any, I get that. And I'm really proud you picked up to get it. But in any event, I really suggest, and I think if you know any reasonable thing together to push this meeting out to a time when everybody has shot a theme here, that's not an invasion or whatever, it's, it's just back to their cut. It really, it's, if you don't do that, you're just doing wrong. It's stat.
Hi. I just want to say, I heard a lot of hear that. I actually really appreciate you being up there this time. It's been a more pleasant than usual meeting. You're much nicer than Scrum. So, I, I mean, we just want to talk to you. Anyways, I kind of just wanted to piggyback on a couple comments I've heard about parking. Because I love parking, parking management, economic parking, I remember very well to me. So whether it's Mindy, or it's a resident who can't mind parking when they get home, these, you know, some of the solutions to curbside management or parking management isn't going to the food station. That's not really bad for, you know, looking at the beaches and stuff, I mean, that's part of it. But what you really should be doing is taking someone like Mark, 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 Mark Love. Mark and Patty Moore and the planners, people work on economic development. Because parking, part of these solutions to... people working on economic development. Because parking, part of these solutions to parking management is looking at transportation alternatives. And there's a whole lot of things that, you know, puzzle pieces that go into that. And start transportation alternatives, though. Meeting, try to keep people from driving to the train station. Use a bus, you know, having bus stop signs, things like that, buses that show up. Good walking network, bicycle network, et cetera. Well, right now, I actually had a phone conversation with Patty Moore last week. We discussed a grant that's coming up. I'd offer to write this grant for free if you worked with the city as the city of your sponsor, because I'm already eligible to write grants already in the DOT system as a director of nonprofit. So there is a really massive TAP grant, Transportation Alternatives program, federal grant, minimum $250, maximum $5 mil per project. And it just has a split on it. So that's why we're going to be a sponsoring agency. Something like this TAP grant can actually help with parking. It can actually help issues, whether it's PSAs, like you were mentioning, talking about just public service announcements. Those are actually free. I can send you some templates for them to get out on our social media. And I've sent out templates in the past to Mark and to, I think it was Jack, and also PSAs to send out for TAP safety. But these, you know, these are, parking is, this isn't like, it's never going to get fixed. There are solutions. And there's grant money out there. But I think that you're, you might be approaching this in a, oh, well, this is a police matter. But no, this takes a little more like all hands on deck type of approach to parking management. And this ties in so nicely with planning and development. And I just think that maybe there just needs to be a larger conversation around parking. And I will push that statement in a minute. Parking with community members such as myself were willing to put in a lot of work. And I think I've demonstrated this past year from the election, I was willing to put in the work. It just seems like a no-brainer. And my phone is always on the wrong.
Thank you. Thank you for the comment.
I didn't even hear you. I'm on this, but can you guys say one, have you not been here tonight?
I did at the beginning of the meeting.
I'm sorry?
I explained why he was not here at the beginning of the meeting. But there were unfortunate situations.
He's not?
At the beach. Yes, I did at the beginning of the meeting.
That highlights even more why we should have a full-time city manager. You can't have a guy who's supposed to be here to vitalize the community, who is going away on a police matter, first law, and what does the police commission have to do with that. I've been on the notice of responsibility of that nature. Police commissioner just gets in the way. So that's no one seriously could not be here. But again, like I said, it highlights that we need to have a full-time city manager. Where are we at with the city manager? What steps are we narrowing down the shortlist?
You can finish your comment in the last one.
Okay. I'm going to address Mr. Dragozinski's comments about what he said, or if he didn't say, or what he can try and revise if he really wants. But the cameras are not on, Mr. Dragozinski. Your words can be captured forever, and they can be reviewed. So what you say they were, doesn't really matter. There's a record. There's a verification record of what he said. And what he's saying now, claiming your position now, is very different from what he said at the outset. Last thing that I want to talk about is, can we define reside as in reside in the city, as in the city manager, whoever that person may be, has to reside in the city within 90 days after they hire?
Is that definite?
That's a, do we have a definition? I mean, is that really taking a lease for a membership? I want to qualify so you can answer correctly. We're talking about taking a lease in a apartment, or do we actually have to physically reside? Do you have to spend the night in the city? Can you be the city manager residing in the city while the rest of your family lives elsewhere? Are these permissible definitions of reside? I'm done.
I can respond to both of those, two of the three comments. The first one is the city manager's search is continuing. We, as recently as this week, met to do interviews. With regard to how we define residency, there is books and votes and councilmen, Brent Bell and Corporate Council, Mr. Dragozinski, and all day turn, because the room can answer to this. There's case law and different legislation of how you determine what residency is and what residents are and how we define residency. And I'm sure it's defined in our charter and our code as well. So there isn't necessarily a clear answer, but I'm assuming that the legislation is very clear and the case law will define that will cross that bridge of it.
Correct. If I'm wrong, Mr. Dragozinski has himself applied for the city manager's position?
I'm not going to give him that.
You're saying you're not going to answer why he has applied?
I am not.
Okay. Well, let's assume for the purpose of this.
I am not going to engage.
You're getting the legal process, the guy who has applied.
I am not going to engage in hypotheticals with you.
You need to get, you need to get a check that's legal and from somebody other than the guy who's applying.
Thank you for your comment.
Very glad to see you boys just picking up on Mr. Gussel's thought. Isn't residency bound exclusively by the city council, as you guys define it in Detroit? The answer is yes. All right. One of the things that I want to bring up, and I bring up every year, is the lifeguards going later than 6 o'clock on hot days. You know, again, like today, we should have had lifeguards on. I know, I am an expert on this. I've spent 50 years. I was head of the largest lifeguard in New York State. And there is no reason not to have lifeguards. There are, I know there's an expense involved with it, but there are ways to do it with comp time and stuff like that. Where you could give kids comp time when we don't need lifeguards, like on a rainy day, and even if you gave them a benefit, you know, two for one or something like that. You could have them on days that are hot. It's ridiculous not to have a force that can be manipulated so that when we need them, we have them. And stop people from drowning. A couple of things on item eight and nine. I'm just asking you, number one, I don't understand why on item eight, you have the hearing on July 17. And on item nine, you have it on July 3. Why can't you, well, you've already been asked to have that meeting not on the 3. If you guys decide you're going to have it on the 3 regardless, you have your reasons, no question about it. But I just don't understand why one would be on the 17, one would be on the 3, and the most important one is on the 3. But I am asking you, on the noise ordinance, to have a little bit more information. I know we come here and we have meetings, and there are all sorts of questions, and you guys don't have the answers. Does anybody know what the decibels will be with this machine? It's a 24-hour a day machine that's going to be pumping sand in. But, you know, I'm just asking ahead of time, ahead of the hearing, if you could get that information to us, so that people will know what they're talking about. And it's not one of those things where they're having a hearing and nobody knows what's going on. The same thing with the bond. There are a lot of questions. There was the April 3 hearing. There were a lot of questions raised. I still don't think they were answered. And it would be nice before we have the hearing if we have that information. That's what I missed.
Thank you. Judy Vining?
Hello. Judy Vining, to get you a little bit where I want to. First, we invite all of you to please come sit with us once a month, or one of you, or one of you. Because there are things that we discuss that involve city laws policy, and being part of the discussion is very, very different than just hearing at the end of the discussion. And it's very valuable. Until, until 2012, when obviously the world changed, from 2000 to 2012, we had, at almost every meeting, a city, city council person. Clearly, that had to change. Lots of it had to change for a while. But, you know, we're in the Civil War. And so we had a different acting city manager. It was our last city manager who started calling caucus meetings on Wednesday nights. So it was impossible for people to attend. But I'm asking you to please be part of the process. What triggered this for me tonight is that we were two things we were likely to talk about in terms of city ordinances. One is that when the county of Nassau redid their social health ordinance and added opioids into it, I took hours. And yeah, we were heading in. We had opioids in there. We were having marijuana in there. So that made me too sure. And the other thing is in terms of, we talked about in terms of hookah lounges and trying to get ahead of that curve. And I was on a pretty frightening road course this afternoon. The Department of Health issuing a statement or a negotiation of their report for the next few days recommending the legalization of marijuana. And we know that the hookers shot in marijuana industry are poised to take advantage of that in a very good way. So while you can't target a specific industry, there are ordinances that other places use by putting spatial limits on it, eliminating more of the problem with the thing. At rates, like 6,000 feet instead of 500 feet away from a school, a lake, or a community center where there are dangerous things. And in effect, it sort of contained a lot more. But again, this is stuff we talk about on a monthly basis. And again, until 2012, not only do we have a council person there, but our corporation council was there as well. And so when we talk about legislation, we can talk about, I mean, that's great, I promise you that. But it's not a bad upgrade. It's just that it's part of the process. And we really invite you to help us with these two ordinances and also to come sit with us. Thank you.
Thank you for the invitation. When I first came onto the council, I had the opportunity to sit with you. And obviously, that was on Wednesday night. So has the, are you still on Wednesday nights?
We're always on Wednesday.
Yeah. And that's a challenge, because we're still here. So again, as an educator, I would love to be a part of that conversation.
So here's the question. On, we're not there every Wednesday night.
Okay. On the Wednesday nights, we give you enough notes before our meetings. Could that Wednesday night caucus be changed?
I'd love to have, please, could you please send a group invitation to the council?
I do have that.
That would be wonderful. To receive and then we could.
I think you're all on my email list.
I haven't received anything from you.
Okay.
No, but I'm just saying, just in the future, it would be nice if we could have the invitation. But this is for all civic groups on Wednesday evenings. We're usually here. And by the fact that we're currently trying to make sure that we have a city manager, a comptroller.
I understand.
We're here on Monday nights now. This is just part of things, not just for you. But we're here on Monday nights as well. We've been here on Wednesday nights. So it's important, if you get the information in advance, we'll do our best to be there.
Okay?
Thank you.
Miss Golden Savage?
Yeah.
Greg Kombisky?
Pass. Thank you.
Brandon Healy?
Brandon Healy, West End, Long Beach. He represents to the West End, the Pacific Association, and I'm going to share a couple of things on the quality of life in the West End. First and foremost, under the leadership of Billy Panzi, we formulated a, I should say, a committee on standards and quality of life. The purpose of that committee is to provide transparency in a forum for the residents of the West End to look at quality of life issues, one of those being the application for new liquor licenses and changes of liquor licenses. The West End is very oversaturated. We want to make sure that residents have an opportunity to voice their concerns and provide support of businesses as well to provide the public advantage and convenience in the West End. We do that through a standardized process. It's taken three months to put this together. We have a program that's very similar to the community boards in New York City. We engaged with the 30th Division of the Parks Office. We reached out to the applicant, asked him to complete a questionnaire. We then interviewed the applicants as well. Then we provided the pink, the pink to support abstaining or opposing the license, the state liquor authority as well as to the city council. As a part of that, as an update for the city council, we have done a few things. First and foremost on Minnesota's, which I presented several months back, about several issues we had in terms of their license, is that first of Drew DeMorgan and the members of Minnesota's LLC have been talking about lawyer issues. They have our concerns. They have put together a community, which has reduced the burden on the police department. They've also focused on reducing garbage and concerns on Minnesota Avenue. That's worked out very well. Still ways to go. We still have some stipulations where we're requesting on their license, but we are making progress with it and thank them for their efforts. The second is we have pursued a petition for a slicing license. Now, people have it, which is a whole lot of prints, liquor license application, which I have a petition, which we will share with the city council tonight. We have not yet gotten an opinion on slicing license or not yet, but it's happening. So I'm just excited. The other part of the report is that we have, we are proudly in support of two liquor license applications in the West End. First being baked by the ocean, as well as Blacksmith Red, who voted for VRY side of licenses, under the stipulation agreement that they will follow the rules and what they put together in their application questionnaire to us. Meaning that they're not going to serve at a certain point, meaning that they're not going to, you know, engage in other activity other than like present in their application. So I shared that with the city council, because the committee has done a lot of work in this area. Again, liquor licenses is one area that we're focusing on. We do a lot of quality of life issues as well. So I'd like to thank you again for your support. I feel that petition, we have received, and again, provide that just for transparency, not so much that we are supporting against the application. It's something we did receive just a few months back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think there's, there's not a copy. We can get the copy sent to the guys who are working on this. Absolutely. Mr. Calori?
Mike Calori, Long Beach. I just have some potential revenue sources that you may want to look into. But council may be already doing this as well. So I don't know if it's redundant, but it's about closer seats on it. And I could hand out, what I have asked the individual who runs this is just to give you a list of, we each have a topic here as well. Give me a list of all municipalities that you've saved money. There are two pages there. Collectively, you may know other similar people on these boards, these councils, another attorneys in other areas. What it is, generally speaking, Cablevision, Alties, Verizon, they pay a municipality what percent is called a gross receipts tax. If you look at some of the larger amounts there, like we look over $100,000 into that $150,000, these are just some things that does not cost, there's no labor cost to the city. We're consultants. You may be already doing this, so if you have not, if you're not, I would recommend at least looking into it. I think it's worth it. Secondly, as far as New York Avenue and West Olive Street, it seems to be an area that is problematic for any visibility when it comes to intersection and parking. I've met with other people that are in the city with traffic control. And my thoughts, and they're the experts in my being, was that vans at a higher level impede the visibility of a person intersecting with New York Avenue and Olive. Perhaps maybe limiting that space or allowing only sedan-level cars at that corner. I challenge you all to just take a drive by and just see for yourself. We're I challenge you all to just take a drive-by and just see for yourself, if you have the time, while you ask somebody else to do that. John Veranda, I want to wish you a happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you for your, your joy. Thank you to the building department recently, they're checking up on overgrown weeds in the area, and I just want to thank them. I think you may want to consider a noise decibel read a machine if the noise at the beach becomes a little bit over bammed for some. It's an opinion based thing, but this is a meter that, we have a code in this charter that states how much the noise should be. And lastly, thank you, Mr. Healy, for all the work that you do, and Bill Tansy with the quality of life issues in the West End. Thank you council members for all that you do as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lorraine Santos, I live in Long Beach.
Did you just have to speak into your...
My name is Lorraine Santos, I live at 72 North Avenue, right here in Long Beach, and I have a few residents who agree as well. We live in a section between Beach Street and Park Avenue. I know everyone is aware, this is a point of contention, have less than half, but the backyards of the roofline residents are encroaching immensely on Nevada Avenue. I have pictures here for the council to see. These are viewed looking north, those are viewed looking south. We've got driveways, aprons, bushes, cement walls coming into Nevada Avenue. Nevada Avenue is already a narrow street. Obviously, Nevada Avenue should have been a wide street, of course, over the years, the encroachments, the driveways, the bushes, the trees, the cement walls, the gates, the cars parked in their backyards are approaching Nevada Avenue. The street is so narrow now, you can hardly get a garbage truck down or a fire truck. We have also inquired from the building department, do we get a new street? We are walking to the beach on South Nevada, they have a beautiful new street, it was just repaved about three weeks ago. We were told that not only are we not getting a new street, but that we're not on the list for a new street. And when we see a pattern of streets, South Ohio, the streets in the middle getting paved, after the south part of the street has been getting paved, we wonder why. We don't want to back that all of these backyards are approaching from the town hamstead, don't want growing backyards in Nevada, be a prevention for us getting a new road. In addition, we have a problem with the speeding. There's a light on Trenton and Beach that is slow as anything. It makes people want to turn down the volume so that they can make a right, a foot right turn on Beach Street, rather than accept the light at Trenton and Beach. We have serious problems speeding, and we also would like, and are asking for more runway signs. When you're driving down Beach Street West, there's only one, one-way sign, and it's being blocked somewhat by the street sign. I can give you a picture of that. So, we would like more one-way signs. We would like the speed bumps to be put back on, while we have them prior to Hurricane Sandy, with winters, before Hurricane Sandy, they were removed, they were put back. And there is a sign on one of the pictures, you can see, we still have signs, speed bumps. So, we would like our speed bumps back. We realize that this has been going on for years, but it's getting to the point now where it's big, it's big problem, or she was too narrow.
I don't know if you sent the emails earlier.
I did.
So, please have, I know someone from the building department has been down there, I believe the commissioner has been down there to look at, to look at the encroachment issues, to look at some of the, I don't recall if your email mentioned the speed issue, but I think all of the commissioners here, and I think that we'll continue to look into. I know some of it is with the town hamstead, it's not just simply being able to pave a street. And we'll respond to your email as soon as we have a comprehensive understanding of the street. I know that the building commissioner was down there to look into the encroachment issues, and it's just, we're just kind of putting it together and getting all of the information to see the best way forward for the city and for the residents, and potentially coordinating with the town hamstead to the extent that's necessary.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Well, it's not a city, it's a city board, we should try to get a draw to resolve the decision, just send a copy of the document as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
This is, this is your comments that you just, that you just...
That is the document for Nevada Avenue that was sent to many areas of the city.
Yes, okay. It's out of the...
Francis, this is my last visit. I don't know why this week, Bernie left, did he leave?
It's not required to be here.
Ms. Preston, West End, just a couple of questions, and then I will let this go. If the acting city manager is acting as the city commissioner this evening, who is then acting as the city manager? There is no reading of the update. I think people should know that the, it's the Army Corps meeting, no one has mentioned that at all this evening. There's questions, we've always asked questions, we've asked Mr. Arango as well, to please answer them during the council meeting, so there's follow-through. What has ever happened to the committee, the recreation committee? We still don't have people on there. And what is the process for an ethics committee? Would you separate a plan to come under that? Where is the comprehensive plan in terms of any upcoming meetings? I also believe that July 3rd meeting should be moved. Well, I sent an email, but I did not get a return regarding the June 15th meeting that was canceled without any, from what I understand, any proper notifications. And my final two thoughts regarding sidewalk clutter, especially in the West End, and also now more prominent in the East End, there needs to be four-foot clearance. And I know that June and July have discussed the sandwich sign. According to the charter, they're not allowed, but they're everywhere. So, either every business needs to get rid of them, or everyone needs to pay that fine. And if there is a fine, what, what is that fine, how much is it? And my final thing is, again, just because of the city hall building, with the windows being open currently as they are, they're an extreme safety hazard. So, if anyone's leaning on them, one day it's just going to fall out. So, just, go ahead. Thank you. So, are any answers to my questions, or...
I've been through, through some of them. With regard to the comprehensive plan, I think that the council has discussed at some point, we now have the budget moving forward with potentially the finer theory. At this time, there are no additional meetings scheduled. The July 3rd meeting, you've requested that it be moved, a number of individuals have. I think we can discuss at the council the feasibility of doing that, and the impact that it actually has on our budget, since the funds that are being coughed for were contemplated when we were passing the budget. The city manager, I think it was an unforeseen emergency, he had planned to be here, I was talking to him just before, I can tell you that... I'm just, I'm just going through all of our questions. The intent was for him to be here, unfortunately, there was a horrible incident that occurred that prevented him from being here. It also prevented us from really having an update given by another individual, since it was really rather last minute. I think that it happened within an hour of the council meeting starting, and didn't allow us really to have that, that part-time. With regard to the sidewalk clutter, I think we should speak with the city manager after the meeting, and to the extent that there's an issue, we'll continue to work, to work on it. If it's a code enforcement issue, we can, we can deal with it that way. If it's a fine issue, I don't have the answer to that question specifically, but we'll definitely get to it, I have it written down. And I don't know the amount of the fine offhand. Sorry. I think that I answered all of the questions. Okay.
Captain Valeri, Long Beach. My quick solution to parking problems that could happen next week, I think it's overly liberal to allow someone to stay in the same space for two weeks. I'm sure there was a rationale for it 30 years ago. I don't know what it was, but I'm in the East End, and we have problems with houses having eight cars to one house, and people going on vacation and just leaving their car for three weeks in front of one house. And I'm sure with someone who was talking about it, it's terrible. So, I would suggest like lower the two-week limit down to one week, I think that should be sufficient. For anyone who's sick or goes on a short vacation, but two weeks is really too little, because it takes you like three days to figure out what the same car is for now, you know, it's just too little for that. I was going to talk about the money in the reserve fund, which should be around $6 million now, being used to pay down $4 million a year for paying the interest. But I see that we're right back to where we were, borrowing money for next budget. You know, we, we were here for about two, five-hour meetings, shooting down a $2.1 million proposition, now we're on $2.5 million. It just seems like a knee-jerk reaction. I know towns have a lot of problems with this issue, particularly mold, when I'm aware of, but why not consider taking money out of this reserve fund instead of borrowing and just digging ourselves in deep, all right? I just, I just can't believe this, like deja vu, like we're all sitting here for 10 hours discussing how we didn't want to borrow money, and now we just needed it for this year, and then it's right back in front of us. It doesn't make any sense. That's my comment.
Thank you.
Captain Valeri, Long Beach. Just first of all, what's the process when you handle paperwork for the local attorney to sign up?
I was just...
Should they not be handled in order that they were submitted?
They were just here.
Okay. And just for future, I think, I'm pinning it, so we can choose to do as we want, but if they didn't have it to be early to sign up, so that you can address what you need to address, if you're finding them out there, then it should be addressed. Okay, John Veranda, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Want to talk to you? Do you have any idea whether the other half of the boat launch is going to be put in? The ramp on the boat launch, one side is in.
As soon as they finish repairing.
Okay, so that's how we have it. Do you have any idea?
No idea, because we're still waiting for the person.
Oh, we have a, we have a...
No, we have, we had to get several prices, because it's over $6,000. So, we're required to get three prices. We're in the process of trying to get the third price. When we get the third price, we'll put the purchase order, because that's the procurement policy, and then we'll get the purchase order, go into it every day.
Gotcha, thank you. So, just on that note, there was a recreation superintendent, not superintendent, recreation supervisor, who was down by the boat ramp over the weekend, and I don't know if he was there to supervise on the skateboard ramp, but he was trying to supervise on the boat ramp. I don't know if it's any of that one, I know he could do it the other, but there's a tremendous backlog, that's why I say that getting people in it now. On top of which, there were also somebody who was uploading their boat, on both occasions, where their children are swimming at the bottom of the boat ramp. So, I don't know what the signage is on the...
That's a, that's a recreation issue.
Issue, okay. So, somebody should address the recreation department, make sure we have proper signage on the, on the, you know, street side, that nobody should be swimming near the bottom of the launch. That's number one. Excuse me, number two, all things considered, what happened today, this is a very tragic day, once again, to start off the summer, we haven't been begun. I know we have two pieces of boat equipment, a new hire apartment boat, and a piece of motorboat. Love to hear if they were utilized today, if there was any help in this recovery, but I don't believe, I'm not sure either boat is even in the water. So, I think we should look at the fact that we purchased equipment, whether it be ramps or not, especially we have the manpower to man them in these situations if the beaches aren't open. I'm sure we have a few outdoors out there, should be looked at. Again, this is not an attack, it's just a great awareness. I am, on more than one occasion this week, I've seen the jetties, as early, as late as 6:30 before I left for this meeting today, are people on the jetties. I don't know what our plan is, we talked about people patrolling, whether it's the blue shirts, controlling ATVs, or live cards, really not the live cards, or auxiliary police, but somebody should be there to control. We are headed for a giant disaster as it pertains to our jetties with people on them. Every night this week, when you look out the window, walking or not, there are tons of people up and down that are on those jetties. And we are, we're just asking for it. And I appreciate the signs, and they're all people. The last thing would be also, I think, I think, we elected all of you into office, and we deserve the rights to have a city manager and a city comptroller in place. Enough is enough, it's over seven months long, and you're not being very forthcoming to the residents. You're going to make us boil up our paperwork to find out who's applied, who needs to be, who's not. I think you should be a little bit more with the people that are sitting in this room and the residents of the city of Long Beach, they are in that life. They are...
Thank you.
Edward Arango? As I brought up at the last meeting, this city has a problem with transparency and accountability. The idea that we should have a bond hearing on July 3rd is ridiculous. This council knows many people go on vacation around this time, and many would not want to attend a bond hearing on their, beginning of their Fourth of July holiday. This is why I ask the council to change the hearing until the next meeting. Before this hearing, a full list should be released of everyone receiving a payment, and it should be double and triple checked for accuracy. This would be the first of many steps to repair the breach in trust between the city and its residents. Accountability is important, and this council needs to do just that. Thank you.
Good night, have a good night, go home, be pleased.